Good afternoon. We're gonna call this meeting to order. It's a meeting of the Plating Commission of New Ulam, Minnesota. It's four thirty PM, Thursday, May thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. First order would be to approve the minutes from April twenty-fifth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two point one is a public hearing, or excuse me, three point one. It's a public hearing. Consider the application of Todd Zungel requesting a conditional use permit to allow the placement of up to forty-five hundred cubic yards of fill in a special flood hazard area, subject to inundation by the one percent annual chance flood. Also known as the Flood Fringe District in the city of New Ulam, Flood Plane Management Regulations. The property is legally described as Lot One, Block One, Zungel Edition, Street Address thirteen oh five South Front Street.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for the description of the property as well. So for a little bit more background information, this site is located east of South Front Street, north of D Street, and then west of the Minnesota River, Minnesota River levee. There are currently several small storage buildings located on the property. And the city of New Ulam also has a fairly large easement that is crossing Lot One in a north-southerly, or northern-southerly direction. The purpose of that easement is for the Minnesota River levee, as well as a storm sewer main that goes to the river. That easement is, excuse me, that easement is a little bit over a hundred and thirty-one feet wide. Property to the north of Mr. Zungels is zoned R one, to the west, B two, Service Business District, and then to the south. And east are a residential ag district. There is vacant land to the south and east, and single-family dwellings to the north, as well as various properties to the west, across Front Street. So the city floodplain regulations are found in Section twelve of the city code, and these regulations are based on documentation provided by FEMA from two thousand and nine. The proposed project again would involve the placement of up to forty-five hundred cubic yards of fill in order to raise the elevation of the lot to the required height, to be buildable within that flood district. The fill would be placed in a portion of the lot bound by South Front, the levee, and the south property line of the lot. There is an existing storm sewer manhole on Lot One that would need to be raised, raised to the required fill elevation, and we'll address that in a minute. And the reason, the whole reason we're doing this conditional use permit is because the city's floodplain regulations require a conditional use permit if we're installing or placing fill of over one thousand cubic yards in that area. Mr. Zungel is proposing to build a single-family dwelling following the filling of the site. The small storage sheds are proposed to be relocated on an area south of the house and north of the levee and east of South Front Street. In a little bit of time, the placement of the sheds will require a license agreement with the city of New Ulam, and that will take place later. There is adequate room for a single-family dwelling on this property, and the proposed land use does conform with the city's comprehensive plan and is compatible with this existing neighborhood. And if you wouldn't mind, I'll go through the attachments real quick. Attachment number one is Mr. Zungel's conditional use permit application. Attachment two is an overview site map of the area, and I'll just run through that quick. The dashed yellow lines are the city's easement, the boundary of that easement. If you can imagine a line sort of down the center of those two dashed yellow lines, that is the location of the levee. Mr. Zungel's area that he's proposing to fill is within that green, that green area. The location of the storm sewer, manhole, and exit are pointed to again on that, on that map. The floodway is that red line, and the flood fringe is, is the orange line. The next attachment is just to zoom up, zoom in closer of that site, so you can see things a little bit more clearly. Following that, we have a few photos of the site. That first one is looking south. You can see the sheds that are gonna be moved, and you can also see in the background the Minnesota River levee. And again, we took one from the north, and you can see those sheds and the top of the levee. There are a number of proposed conditions that staff has considered for this, for this project. The first one is the elevation of the first floor of the structure must be above eight fourteen point five mean sea level. The placement of the fill must conform with the city's floodplain management regulations. Residential basement construction shall not be allowed below the flood protection elevation of eight fourteen and a half mean sea level. The applicant will prepare for the city, and prepare for the city review and approval of a plan identifying the location and elevation of all fill, an erosion and sediment control plan, and identify the methods for stabilizing that fill on the site. These plans will be prepared either by a licensed professional or by another qualified individual acceptable to the city. Placement of the fill also should not impact the surrounding properties. The applicant will, will secure approval from the city of New Ulam to place the fill within the easement area designated in Document three nine three two thirteen and located on Lot One, Block One of the Zungel Edition. I'm gonna continue to read through these. The applicant will make through, make those improvements necessary to allow the existing storm sewer manhole on the property to function and operate. The applicant will also provide the city with convenient access to the manhole and piping, and will construct any improvements to the storm sewer and manhole as directed by the city engineer department. The applicant will not object, object to any noise generated by the operation of pumps or other equipment to the property, to the property to maintain the adjoining storm sewer system. The applicant will consult and advise the property owner to the north of the proposed placement of the fill, including the location and elevation adjoining their common property line. Placement of the fill will not impact the city's, the city's Minnesota River levee. And upon completion of the project, the licensed professional engineer shall certify to the city that the project and any structures have been built in construction, constructed in compliance with these requirements. Designation of the floodplain elevation has been made by parties other than the city, and the city makes no representation as to the accuracy of the same. Floodplain designation is an estimate only, and actual flood events may vary significantly from the elevation set for the floodplain. The designation of the floodplain does not imply that the subject property will be free from flooding or flood damage. And in, in the event of a flood affecting the subject property, the city will not undertake any activity to protect said property or any improvements therein from the effects of such a flood event. The applicant will pay, also ask, sorry, lastly, the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Mr. Zungel is here to answer any questions that you may have.
This is, this is a public hearing, so anyone that wishes to speak up on this particular random need to come to the mic, state your name and address, and you're already there, so.
My name is Todd Zungel. My address is one three eight five five Cottonwood Street, New Ulam, Minnesota. Just kinda here to answer any questions you would have. Do have a drawing, I think that shows all my plans for the future here. I will take all my existing roof water off that house straight over to this drain, so it will not affect the neighbor. I've talked to the neighbor, and we have one of two plans. I will incur any expense to taper our lots and fill them in together, but it would have to be approved by someone who is a little more skilled, like M and R paving. Otherwise, we have an option to not touch his lot at all and add an existing drain right here and just leave his natural taper come in. Mine would come right off behind my garage in this area, and there would be no effect to his lot whatsoever.
What is the status of you and your neighbors on that agreement now?
You wanna speak to that?
So far as verbal agreement, we kinda talked about where the sole would be, where the fill would be, bring my lot up to his height that he's proposing, to make everything go together and run out toward Front Street between the two houses, like any other house in town. And I'm fine with that. Whatever fills gave it in the back there, for him.
Okay, I got a few questions, but go ahead if any wanna.
I, I, just to, just because we mentioned forty-five hundred cubic yards of fill, is that a, how did we get to that number? Or is that important? If you need more than that, do you need to come back, or how does that work?
I don't feel like you need more. I had the original portion just for the, just for the house here, area, which was, I should say, oh, up to here. This area, which is probably, I would say, that's gotta be close to a third of what it is, and that was only eighteen hundred square feet at maximum, was the estimate from Butch from up in construction. So then when M and R paving got involved, they gave me the number to go with for filling in the rest of it. So he gave me a total of forty-five hundred she'd covered.
I just wasn't sure if it had any ramifications as far as the motion, you know, if he ran into something else.
Well, the, the motion that we're looking at in here is up to forty-five hundred yards, so.
I have to go with M and R's judgment. They, they said it would fill it, so.
Sure.
Okay, for me, a lot of things going on here, and I have a little problem with just having verbal agreements. Now, he read off a lot of options or a lot of conditions. Were those, excuse me, we seen those on paper. Have you seen all of those conditions on paper?
I've seen all those conditions on paper. I'm good with all of those. The only thing that's verbal would be between Dan and I, and that's if we decide to enhance his yard, we have a plan which meets the city's needs and requirements without affecting Dan's lot whatsoever. So we, anything else we would do, we would do after the fact if we can come to an agreement. If we can't, we do have a solid plan that Steve Kaler and the other gentleman have all looked over and approved, so.
So you've seen them all?
Yep.
Read them all, other than the one, and you agreed to all of them?
Yes, I do.
Okay. 'Cause we read off a lot, awful lot of things, wanna just make sure that everybody's clear. I don't wanna have, we drift this way or that way, so.
No, we've went over this plan quite a bit, and I realize the expense of raining that, raising that drain and stuff, that falls in my area, so.
Well, it for me.
John, if they do get in an argument, hopefully you won't, your neighbor and yourself, in between this short period of time, all of a sudden you say, "I'm not gonna take care of the water situation on his property." Is this, is there still recourse for the city to protect his neighbor?
Well, one of the conditions is that the, the applicant will consult and advise the property owner to the north of proposed fill, including the location, elevation. So what we don't, and we also have in here that the placement of the fill should not adversely impact the surrounding properties. So we would be considering those two things for any kind of recourse. Currently, we're asking them to be conditions on this, on this permit. So we would go back and take a look at the situation and address it at that point.
And all of the fill is coming from?
All the fill is coming out of Front Street.
Out of Front Street. Will that have any effect on all the work that's gonna be done with the new road down there this fall?
They're the ones bringing it in. M and R is gonna coordinate that, so they're.
Okay, so it's all tied together?
It's all tied together.
Good. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and what would your wishes are, folks?
I'd make a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions that the city put on the landowner.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the, the request with the conditions just presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You do need to take this down to the city council, would be next Tuesday.
Correct.
Recommend you be there.
I will be. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Thanks.
Good luck.
Item three two, consider the application of Roger Stoll requesting a variance to allow the replacement and expansion of an existing garage with a zero, zero foot setback from the side east and rear south property lines. The property is legally described as Lot B of Lot seven, Block one forty, north of Center Street. Street address eight oh seven, Second North Street.
Alright, Mr. Stoll's property is presently zoned R two, the single and two-family zoning district. Currently, city code for a lot this size, this is a third lot, but for a lot this size with a width of less than sixty-five feet, we require a side yard for a building. Can be reduced down to five instead of ten. In addition to that, for the rear yard for an accessory building, our code requires that it be ten foot from that rear line. So we're on a small lot here, and there's existing conditions with this site. And Mr. Stoll is asking for a variance, requesting zero feet from that side yard and zero from that rear yard setback. Now, the current garage owned by Mr. Stoll is physically connected to the neighbor's garage to the east at one twenty-seven North Washington Street. And the current garage owned by Mr. Stoll is also set back at zero feet from the side and rear yard property lines on this site. Mr. Stoll is proposing to maintain that connection with the existing neighboring garage and would not be obviously any closer to the rear or side property lines than exist today. This situation was created through the subdivision of Lot seven, Block one forty north. In nineteen forty-five, when they subdivided the area, and there was an existing garage on site, which they put a property line through. And that can be seen in our attachments. So in addition to that, there was an agreement between Lot A and Lot B, so that was entered into in nineteen forty-five pertaining to this common garage. And that agreement talks about any repairs or maintenance of that set garage, the style and color, color to be kept uniform, but that sense hasn't been, hasn't been done. They're different colors currently. And then that it be mutually agreed that the garage is insured for a reasonable amount. So there, there has been a similar variance in nineteen eighty-two, and this variance was granted, granted to construct the garage, a garage at zero feet for a side and rear yard property line setback for Florence Charlemagne, which is the neighbor to the north. And that variance is the one, or that variance is granted for the garage that is physically connected to Mr. Stoll's. So staff, staff recommends approval, subject to one condition through the building official, which is that they install a one-hour fire separation on the common wall and adjoining wall to the neighboring garage. And then the attachments, I have the application and the survey from nineteen forty-five. In that survey, you can see they actually drew the garages in and then put the property line through them. We have a zoning map showing this is in the R two district, property location map, photo of the site, and then the construction plan, which pretty clearly lays out where everything will be on the site. And then that agreement I had just mentioned between the two properties.
Well, again, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the matter? No else here, so based on that, we'll close the public hearing and take action accordingly. Any motion? Anyone?
All are for a motion to approve with conditions a conditional use permit for construction of the garage.
I'd second that.
We have a motion to approve with conditions and second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four point one, consider the approval of the preliminary plot of Oak Bluffs eighth edition.
Alright, the applicant or the property owner of this preliminary plant is the Diocese of New Ulam. The current legal description is Lot ten, Block twelve, or sorry, Lot ten and twelve, Block one, Oak Bluffs first edition. The addresses are fourteen oh six through fourteen forty-six, Sixth Street, Sixth North Street, fourteen oh seven to fourteen twenty-one, Sixth North Street. And it's currently zoned as R three, the multiple family residence district. So for a little background information, the property is generally located north of Sixth North, east of North Highland Avenue, and south of Seventh North. Property is a total of eleven point nine three acres. The plan is that Lot One will be sold, and Lot Two will continue to be owned by the Diocese. The city's comprehensive plan designates that westerly portion to be medium-density residential and that easterly portion for public, semi-public land uses. Properties to the north, west, and south are designated for low-density residential, and again to the east for public and semi-public land uses. Alright, so adjoining the property to the east and south and west is all zoned R three and R one, and to the north, R one, R two. Little bit of description of that property actually is, would be that the, the adjoining land, land uses are, are this. To the south and west is single-family residence. North is a single and two-family residential. East is vacant and the way, way of the cross. Part of this property that we're discussing here is, is still currently farmed. There are utilities, including water on Sixth North, Seventh North, and Highland, sanitary sewer on Fifth North, Sixth North, Seventh, and North Highland. Storm sewer on Fifth North and North Highland. And the plant will have two lots and a cul-de-sac. There will be three parcels having, having the following lot areas. Lot one, four point seven acres, four point seven five acres. Lot two, six point eight four acres. And then the Sixth North Street right away would be point three four acres. So the former Lot ten, now located within the platted area, was zoned, was zoned R three in two thousand, solely for the development of a community, community unit project, according to city code. Depending on the sale or the land use, the conditional, a conditional use permit may be required to develop this property. Comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. And attached, you can see we have the preliminary plots, showing the different lots. We have an aerial photo. I believe everybody's familiar with this, with this area. Medical Center is down the hill from them on Fifth, and then we have Kids' Excel Center, kinda kitty corner. And then again, residential, residential housing to the north. Then we have our zoning map. And then a few site photos. So that first one looking north is, is looking down North Highland. Looking east is looking up Sixth North. Looking west is looking down Sixth North. And then looking southwest is looking towards the Diocese building. Staff would recommend that, that we approve the preliminary plot with the condition since it complies with city code requirements. Conditions are that we, that they pay the plating fee of two hundred and ten dollars, provide an electronic file of the plat, provide necessary utility easements, and then waive the Parkland dedication fee since this plant does not increase the number of new lots, and the dedication fee was paid at the time of the plating of the Oak Bluffs first edition.
Okay. What were your wishes?
There's some beautiful trees up there. Beautiful old trees.
Right.
So John, you said this would come back for the one block here for ten, for possible rezoning, 'cause that's, you said that's R three currently?
That, so that entire area is zoned R three.
R three.
Yep. If you look at, I believe.
It'll come back then to go to R one at a, at a later date, once the sale is done? Is that?
Not necessarily.
That's really?
R three, R three would allow single-family residences to be built in that area.
Okay.
It depends on whatever, I mean, currently, we don't know, they haven't told us what they're planning on doing with that property.
Could be there also, so we're covered.
Meaning who's planning on, the archite, the owners of the property, or who buys it?
Whoever buys it.
Whoever buys it. So if it's R one, two, or three?
They're covered.
Correct, yeah, it was zoned that way. My understanding is for multiple family residents at one point was thought about going up there. So that's, that's the way it was zoned. But yeah, R ones and two are permissible in the R three district.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance along with the conditions of the city.
I mean, plot.
Plot, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the preliminary plot with the conditions presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. See if I can get myself back here now. How did I do that? There we go. Yeah, getting better at this. Item five, five one, city council decides the concerning planning commission matters in May.
We had one more plat.
Yeah, we had one.
Oh, did we? I passed, okay. Four point one? Or four point two? Excuse me, back up. Four point two, consider the approval of the preliminary plot of the Palmer Edition.
Alright, the applicant for this preliminary plat is the city of New Ulam. Current property owner is the city as well as the state of Minnesota. You can see the current legal description is part of the west half of the northwest quarter in Section twenty-four, township one ten north, range thirty-one west, and then part of the east half of the northeast quarter in Section twenty-three, township one ten north, and then thirty-one, range thirty-one west. The street address is two thousand through two thousand two hundred fifty Palmer Avenue. Zoning is, is the B two Service Business District. So for a little background, this property is located south of, south of US Highway fourteen and west of the airport, east of the extension of Palmer Avenue. So on the, basically, you know where the roundabout is, and it's on the south side of that. The property totals thirty-one point two four acres. State of Minnesota owns thirty acres of that property. This property will be used by the Minnesota Army National Guard. They plan on constructing a field maintenance shop as well as a readiness center on the property. The field maintenance shop is scheduled for construction in two thousand and twenty, and the readiness center in two thousand and twenty-three. City owns one point two four acres of the property that's designated for the use as the public right-of-way and the extension of Palmer Avenue. The comprehensive plan designates that this property, designates this property for business land uses. The property to the west and to the north are already designated for business use, and to the south, industry, and to the east is the airport. Joining property to the east is the RA, Ag Residence District, and then B three. Joining property to the east is the RA, um, egg residence district and then B three to the north. Adjoining Brown County property to the south and west and that is owned A one agriculture. So currently the property is being farmed. To the north of this property though is Menards, there's an undeveloped, uh, commercial piece there as well as the airport clear zones. And then to the east, uh, is the airport. Utilities to this site are located on the south side of Palmer Avenue and the US Highway fourteen roundabout. Storm sewer will require installation of a new line, um, from the site, line to the site from North Highland Avenue. Plat will have one lot and thirty acres, um, and a second area designated as Palmer Avenue. The necessary width of the city street is provided by the roundabout through the slough, through the slough at a distance, um, of one hundred fifty, one hundred fifty-six feet. From that location, only one half of the required width is provided. There are not, no lot area, lot depth or lot width requirements, uh, in the B two zoning district. And the comp plan does not require a park to be, um, in this platted area. You can see in the attachments, we have the preliminary plat and the extension of Palmer Avenue, um, on the west side of that plat and then, um, block one, lot one. That thirty acres is on the east side. And if you look at the aerial photo, um, like I described before, Menards is to the, uh, northwest and you have Sobson Slough a little bit further to the northwest. Walmart, uh, to the northeast and then the airport almost straight east. Again, there's the zoning map showing that this is in the B two zoning district. We have some really exciting, uh, site photos that we took out there of bare ground and some grass. But, uh, if you're looking southeast, you can see the airport in the background. Um, and then looking straight south is again just agricultural land as it continues on. Let me read off the conditions real quick. Uh, the conditions staff would recommend for this, uh, preliminary plat is the, for them to pay the plating fee of one hundred eighty dollars and then provide a, uh, electronic file of the plat, um, or newer format to us.
I would recommend the approval of preliminary plat of the Palmer addition with the conditions laid forth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval for the preliminary plot as presented with conditions. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll try that again. Now we can go down to five point one, council decisions concerning planning commission matters in May.
Okay. So in May, the council did approve the, uh, variance application by Douglas and Sally Foster for that fence to be located at zero feet from the side property line. Remember that was the one where he had come in, um, because he was installing a pool. So that was approved. The council also approved, uh, the variance by Darren Zesky, um, for, to place a shed, five feet from his rear yard and side yard, um, on his property. And then, um, finally, the preliminary and final plat for the Second North and Lincoln Street right of way was also approved by the city council.
Okay, thank you. Anything on heritage?
Did not have a meeting this month.
No meetings?
Nope.
Well, nothing further on the agenda unless anyone has something they wish to. No further business, meeting is adjourned.